We call to order this City of Yamhill City Council meeting Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, 6:04 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Otter's in here.
Oregon here.
Karen here.
We have a forum. We are expecting Tim Askey, Councilor Askey will be here in just a few minutes. We'll move right into public comment, but before public comment, as we've been doing, is to respond to the questions and comments from the previous meeting. I guess we need to do a flag salute. Why don't we go backwards and do a flag salute? Oh, we can do, we have, we'll just start.
Thank you.
All right, flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, Tim Askey, Councilor Askey, if you haven't joined us. Public comment, last council meeting, couple of responses. Just Bob Davis had made comment on an article about the city of Dayton. And Rocky Losley had made a comment that it was difficult for people to see the television screen when it's pointed out the window. There was a tree that was overgrown in front of the monitor. And so Public Works has topped that tree and now the monitor is visible. With that, we'll move into today's public comment. Was there anybody that would like to make a public comment tonight? Please go ahead.
Yes. Me. Hey, my name's Ingrid Denham and I live on 420 East Third. And I was just wondering how the sidewalk situation is doing and the stop signs?
Yes, so we've discussed the stop signs at some length with the chief with ODOT. And we had some review of sort of where some Oregon laws. And although this isn't the public, like the time for me to respond, but if you, I was just gonna offer, if you would wait just after the meeting, I can go over some of those details with you at that point.
Why is ODOT involved in it? If it's, it's not a state or, yeah, it's not a state.
So ODOT has to be involved in any kind of, that there's a stop sign that would potentially affect one of their highways by proximity. But again, we could, we'll go over that. I have, I have some details for you on that. We can do it at the end.
Okay, and how about the police situation on Third Street?
So this is not question and answer. This is actually just public comment. If you had a comment to make, if you had a question that you would like to ask, all questions will be answered by the next council meeting, but I was gonna make an exception for yours today because I do have those answers for you readily available for right after the meeting. For the first question. For your second, would you give us a little more detail so we can get that question answered for you?
The speeding is terrible. And now with the school getting out, there's so many kids up in that park that I'm afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. I almost seen two little girls get killed by a white truck that was speeding down Third Street. And so, you know, we asked for the stop signs and then we asked for, could we get a, the sidewalk in front of the park? But, you know.
And Jason, well, I just died. And again, this is not a time for question and answer, but you.
Real briefly, on the sidewalk, the city is pursuing an SCA grant, which is a small city of the law, which would resolute all those questions you have. So we'd be getting a new sidewalk on that south end completely along the parkway, all the way down to Third Street, where it intersects with Highway 47.
Going from my sidewalk over to the park, could there be something? Because they're flying over that speed bump. Like, it's not even there. Even if they're pulling a trailer, they're still flying.
Okay, so we've gone over our time, but we will address those at the end if you do have the time. If not, I would make another appointment with you to discuss that further. Because it is important to everybody here, yes, for sure. Is there anybody else that would like to comment tonight? Oh, Mike, you've checked, yes?
I had a comment, but Kara was in last round.
Oh, fantastic. Would anybody else like a time for public comment? Do we have anybody online that has their hand raised?
Not hand raised.
Have we received any correspondence by mail anywhere?
Not that I know of.
Fantastic. Okay, so moving on to agenda updates or additions. I do not believe that we have any agenda updates or additions at this point. That said, moving on to the consent agenda. So that would include the financial statement to current, the minutes from the April, May meeting. Then there was the resolution adjusting the police service fee. There was a contract for the city planner. Did everybody have a chance to review the contract from the city planner? It was sent out in our packets. And then the IGA with CARG, which was the contract with the planner and the CARG were very similar contracts. But they definitely needed to go before council before we approved either of those. Did anybody want to move those on to a later part of the meeting or are we comfortable?
I have a question in regards to the police service fee. So it supposedly is supposed to increase yearly, which it hasn't. But there's no indication what that increase will be.
I believe that we discussed them. There was a formula for that.
Yeah, but it's not on the resolution. There's no indication. It says that there's gonna be an automatic increase. But there's no indication as to what that automatic increase is gonna be.
Okay, if we need to go into that, we can move that into new business.
That's fine.
Okay. So we would be removing the resolution R838 and moving that into new business.
Then I have another question.
Okay, and the rear is too?
No, not on that one. On the resolution for the Economic Development Committee. So it indicates.
Does that mean like consent agenda?
No.
That's what we're on. So by removing that, then would leave us with contracts for CARG, contracts for the planner, the minutes on the financial statement to current. Kara, did you have a report for us on that?
I do have a couple of things to point out when you're looking at the financials, revenue side, the planning grant, we are looking at 57,600. We're about halfway there in reimbursement. That will be, be sent, be, be sent in by the end of this week with all things going according to plan. So the reimbursement on that will be total and final in a few months. It will probably come in next fiscal year, however, that will show. Same thing with the police SRO, you're gonna see that we're at 9,000 and we budgeted for 12. The last invoice that they get goes out in June, or June, July and August. So that will likely show either towards the end of this month or in July. Property tax revenue, I do know that for the month of May, we're gonna get just shy of $8,000, which I'm estimating we're gonna end up around 44, 440,000, including June, so May and June, which obviously is shy of what the budgeted amount was for last year, but that has been discussed, that that was way over budgeted for. And with the state revenue sharing, we're gonna be a little bit shy of that, not by much, probably a couple hundred dollars. The only other thing in regards to financials that I would point out is Hemlock Street did go over budget. However, Jason actually did a really great job of negotiating with Ferguson and he got about $8,000 back on what the cost of that should have been. So there's money that's going to be reimbursed to that.
Okay, so was anybody finding any concerns with the financial statement that would need to be addressed further? All right, so with that, then can we get a motion to pass the consent agenda minus R838? Which should be moved to new business.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda minus R838. This will be moving to new business.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, we have passed the consent agenda. Hearings. Had to get my little script up for the hearing. So we have a hearing for the Comprehensive Plan of Legislative Text Amendment. All right, so we're gonna open this hearing for LA 202501 Conference and Plan of Legislative Text Amendments. This hearing will have a public comment period. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. As that hearing is open, do we have public comment? No public comment, then we would be moving on to a staff report, if any.
Thank you, Mayor Doug Rux with the Rux Group, subconsultant on the project. So I'm standing in for Walt this evening. So I'm gonna do like I did at the planning commission meeting. So we'll start by entering the entire staff report and all the exhibits into the record. So as the mayor indicated, this is a legislative text amendment. It's dealing with criteria in Chapter Four. Yamhill Municipal Code 10.132.060 through 090, the City of Yamhill Comprehensive Plan and the City of Yamhill Development Code chapters. In your packet this evening, there are Exhibits A through I. Those are detailed in your staff report. This project is based upon two technical assistance grants that you received from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. One was related to housing, the other one was related to downtown. The changes that are proposed in your development regulations are in Titles 10 and 11. And then there are also some changes in Title 13, which is your annexation regulations. Your staff report goes on in detail a little bit more about some of the additional documents that are in there. There's a code audit summary, which is the summary memo. There's a Yamhill Downtown Code Audit Summary, which again is the summary memo, not the entire document. And then CAC presentation is in a BLI memo that we're all part of this particular project. The procedures tonight, as the mayor indicated, this is a legislative hearing. Your planning commission has reviewed it. We'll get to the planning commission recommendations a little bit later. We had to address the development code and the comprehensive plan goals throughout this process. Section three of your report is your criteria and findings that were prepared by your staff. So 10132090, I'm not gonna go into details on all of these, but there was an analysis that was done on the need for public comprehensive plan amendment. It was identified that it was needed and was directly related to your grants. Was there an error in the original comprehensive plan? No, but there was a lot of old and outdated maps and then other language updates that needed to be made to bring you into compliance. Currently adopted comprehensive plan, that's described in, in your exhibit materials. Adequacy, planner's own current land. It does not propose any redesignation of lands within the city limits. So there's no zone changes. There's no comprehensive plan changes, map changes. Then we get to comp plan amendment and conformance with all statewide planning goals. Your staff provided analysis on all the statewide like planning goals. So citizen involvement, we had a lot of that through this process. Land use planning is another one. And so we've gone through the process. We've had the public meetings. Public has had the opportunity to participate and bring you in compliance with state laws. Agriculture doesn't apply. Open space scenic doesn't apply. Air water does not apply to this proposal. Natural hazards doesn't, but it does update your maps, so the current version looking maps. Recreation does not apply. Economy of the state does apply because we were addressing issues about new and updating regulations. about new and updating regulations in your downtown area, your central business district overlay. Uh, the big focus on this project was on goal ten, which is the housing, bringing you into alignment with the various state laws that have been adopted. Uh, the most prominent that was listed out in your grant was H B thirty three ninety five. Uh, public facilities didn't apply, transportation, we've indicated is satisfied. And energy and conservation didn't apply. Goal fourteen, urban growth boundary doesn't apply to this proposal and goals fifteen through nineteen did not apply. And so they concluded that all the statewide planning goals have been satisfied. Does not involve the U G B expansion uh, or other map amendments uh, to your comp plan designations. And then there was an analysis on the relevant comprehensive plan goals, um, similar to what are in the statewide planning goals. And so your staff went through that analysis and concluded that the proposal was in compliance with your comprehensive plan as existed, plus with the modifications that are being proposed. Um, so your action this evening is to consider the legislative amendment. And um, you have options of adopting or making modifications uh, to the proposal that's in your packet this evening. I know you have a two-step process for your hearings. You hold the hearing and then you come back at your meeting in July and you would uh, adopt your final ordinance. These changes to your comp plan and your development regulations need to be adopted by ordinance. That's what I have for a summary for your staff report.
So we will not be adopting this tonight?
Uh, you can.
Okay.
You can. Um, I'm just going from your past practice, it's usually a two-step. If you are comfortable with the changes that have been proposed, if you have some additional changes, if they're clear enough so that we can make those changes in the next couple of days and get those back to staff, those can be reflected in an ordinance if you choose to adopt one tonight.
Did, now so how, thoughts on this?
I do.
You do?
Yep. So I, I was, I was at the planning commission or planning meeting as a resident, not as a person on council. And my concern is number two, the procedure. And that was, the way it was discussed in the planning meeting was that the builder or developer, whoever, was going to be responsible for posting signs that there was going to be something happening. And this, it says the planning official is responsible for posting the signs. And then in the same thing on, in the procedure number two F, there's no reference that the planning commission will be involved. Or no planning commission involvement in that whatsoever. And that the planning official or the planning, um, the planning official also has the final say, even if there's appeals submitted. That's a concern to me. So the way that this reads in two F is that the planning official, even if there's an appeal, they will be the one that makes the final decision. The way I understood it in the, in the um, planning meeting or whatever, was that the planning commission would then get involved if there was an appeal. But that's not what it says in this.
Can you speak to that, uh, Steve or Doug?
Uh, counselor, are you, you, what's exhibit A?
Of the package, so it's.
And what, it helped me to, to focus to where we're going at by new.
On this here?
Yes.
That's in the packet for tonight?
Um, okay. You're talking about the planning commission recommendations?
So it's review procedure type one through four, and it's on the next page, number two procedure.
Okay.
So the posted notice, it says the planning official should, will post a public notice. And. You know, at the site, no less than fourteen days prior to a decision. The way that it was discussed in the planning meeting was that it, and I don't remember if it was the developer or the builder, would be posting those notices.
Okay, um, so from the planning commission hearing, we've received from the city the recommended changes proposed by them. The discussion was that for type two procedures.
Yeah.
We had language proposed that said for a type three procedure, there was a, a, a site posting, a sign to go on the site.
But are you saying three or two?
I've got to start with three because that's where the planning commission started this conversation. So we had proposed that there would be a sign that would be posted on the property. Uh, that sign would be posted by the planning official. The planning commission questioned, would it be the developer that posted? Or would it be the city that posted? If the city posted it, is there a cost? There was discussion with the planning commission that in your fee schedule, you could, and this is brought up by Walt, you could increase your fees to cover the cost of getting the sign and for staff to go out and put the sign on the property. So they asked to have that s- a similar notification process for type two. Originally, type two did not require a sign to be placed on the property and the planning commission did. So we took the language that was provided to us and we included that language in the type two, getting to it here. Yep. To a different file. Bear with me here. No, I saw that, okay. So what we did under the uh, under ten point one two eight point oh three oh subsection B is we added new language that says posted notice, the planning official shall post, this is for a type two, to post public notice or notices of the application on the subject site not less than fourteen days prior to a decision. Notice posters shall be posted in conspicuous locations with at least one poster on each street frontage adjacent to the subject site. Notices shall be posted at least once every six hundred feet of street frontage along the perimeter of the property. The planning officials shall prepare a signed affidavit of posting, which shall be made part of the file. The affidavit shall state the date and locations of where the notice was posted. So what we did is we, per direction of the planning commission, is we put a, a sign posting requirement for type two type applications. The planning official's responsibility is to post those and then do an affidavit that they posted those. Then it gets to, which is outside of the purview of this hearing, is what you want to do with your fee schedule on your applications. So to cover that cost of whoever you get to make your, you know, two by three sign, the sort of like a yard sale, garage sale sign. Uh, who does that is that you would increase on your fee schedule, all your type two applications, the cost of preparing those and then having staff go out and put them on the property.
Okay, so what about, what about F where it says the planning official shall prepare a notice of decision and mail to the applicant, property owner, you know, blah, 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 in this.
Yep.
So.
Go ahead.
The way that I read through this was that even if an appeal was submitted, that the planning official would still have the final say. And there would be nothing more done on that. The planning commission's not involved in, in the level one or level two portion of, at all.
So type two decisions, which there is a table, um, that is in your packet as well, is that a type two decision is a staff decision that requires notice be sent out to three, all properties within three hundred feet. So staff would do the review. Uh, so in this case, staff would be your contract planner, that would be Walt. Um, however, it's worked out between your city administrator, who signs the decision, that it's an internal administrative function. Uh, but the decision gets issued, then it goes through its appeal period. If it's appealed, then you have to go to the appeal section. And so if it is appealed, a type two, then it gets appealed to the planning commission. The planning commission would then hold a public hearing on that application. So if that occurs, then the planning commission would be making the decision. But you also have to remember, a planning decision, planning commission decision can also be appealed to the city council. So there's a hierarchy that you go through. So under type two, the only time that a type two decision is final is that if there is no appeal of that decision to a higher body.
Is that a little pathetic?
Yeah, so the planning, the, the actual planning official, the official planning official is going to be Walt.
The official planning, the official, official planning person is the city administrator. The city administrator can delegate the task to your contract planner.
Okay, but we don't have a city administrator.
Well, you have, you have in your charter.
We have a step in.
And so whoever's filling that, even on a pro temp or an interim basis, they are your city administrator. They then are functioning as the planning official. They can delegate those authorities down to your contract planner to do your land use planning.
Which is what I would highly recommend when that happens.
Yes.
Okay.
You need a chain of, of command. Because what happened is the way your code was written, it kept referring to the city recorder had all these responsibilities. But if you go to your charter, the city corridor does not have those responsibilities. So we went back and looked at it again and it says that your city administrator is the lead of your planning program. My words, but that's what it says in effect. And so that's why we use the word planning official, it's very discreet, so that, and it, there's a definition.
Could take place.
There's a definition of planning official also that's proposed in your definition section, referring back to this, this city administrator.
Is that clear?
Yeah, it does, as long as we're not hiring Walt out to do menial things that other people can do, that's, that, you know, because of the cost factor involved.
Well, I can also say, and we, this did not come at, at the planning commission, uh, um, before your uh, city administrator's departure, I had them actually send me your fee schedule. So one of the things you want to do, again, it's not part of this project, you want to go through whatever you adopt and go back to your fee schedule and reconcile all that because the, the terms are different in different places. And then again, you want to look at your fees.
So all the, all the fee schedules being updated, should be ready for the next meeting. Um, did it, council have any other questions for staff at this point? You guys are staff now.
All right, could I ask one question? Doug, where did we land with the A D Us and sharing the infrastructure?
Uh, it's an either or, they can either connect directly into the infrastructure in the streets or if the infrastructure's in easement, or they can connect to the primary structure, the primary dwelling. But to do that, then there has to be an analysis through the building permit review process to make sure that the size of the pipes for the water and the wastewater are large enough to accommodate the A D U. That's where the planning commission ended up with it.
So in generic sense, we would have to actually do a study of that infrastructure for that A D U, to have feasible infrastructure.
There, as part of the building permit process, they're going to have to, they say we want to connect to the water line at the house and we want to connect to the wastewater at the house, then they're going to have to have calculations that show that the size of the pipe that exists on the, on the house is large enough to accommodate the effluent going out and the water line is large enough to supply the water to the A D U.
But that would be put to the homeowner or the builder, not to the city?
Not to, the city does not do that analysis, the applicant has to do that analysis.
Well, we're giving them the ability to, in the end, I mean, with the analysis.
Yes.
And everybody's okay with that.
Have an A D U?
To have the A D U take on the infrastructure of the primary house. They would just be grandfathered systems.
Right.
So I think where Jason's going with that is that there was some concern about um, loss of um, S D Cs for the city, is that?
Partially.
Partially.
Yes, I mean, that.
Um, and I think part of the reason that it was adjusted to be either or, so it was to be utilized as two rental residents, then you, it would make the most sense to have two hookups through the city. Um, water billing would be simplified dramatically. Um, I think, was that pretty much the reason for the?
I think that's right and, and, um, but it would be up to the, to the homeowner, uh, 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 ultimately on how they wanted to do it.
So the idea is if you're just going to have grandma living in the backyard, that you wouldn't have to spend S D Cs for a whole hookup? Uh, if it was going to be used more as a commercial application or, you know, like a, a rental of some sort, then you would. Now, that also, that can be readdressed moving forward.
I, I think one of the things to remember, and we shared this with your C A C on many occasions and with planning commission, is that the proposal you have in front of you is what we've evaluated, which we believe is bringing you in compliance with state law. Um, we can't do everything. When we did the code audit, code audit is a very large document. There's lots of things that did not get included, just given the timing and the funding for the project. And so as Walt had indicated, when you adopt something new, you will find that you'll want to make some changes. So you can come back and you can add things and modify things. So six months from now, you may find that, oh, you know, that's not quite what we thought wanted. So you could direct your planning official and your planning consultant to go back and make some modifications and do amendments to your code. Nobody ever gets this one hundred percent right the first time.
Right, so we have mechanisms in place to adjust.
Just so I know, Doug, with, with that in mind, for that to be implicated, we would have to go to plumber's code, correct?
Yes.
So that'd be all based off plumbing code?
Yep.
The city couldn't step in and have any control over three quarter inch, so on and so forth.
It would be, yeah, if you connect it to the primary residence, it'll all be driven by the Oregon structural, uh, Oregon plumbing code.
Does that change dramatically what we're doing now?
To supply an A D U, I mean, we've just never done that before. Typically, what we do for another dwelling is another connection, just because of just source revenue. I mean, now they'll have control, plumbing code will have control over, so a three quarter inch line can supply two houses. So it's just loss of revenue. But like Doug's saying, I mean, if you guys want to go back and modify and subtract, I just, that's just my two cents on that. I mean, there's a lot to that, I don't want to hold this process up, but.
And an extra load on our wastewater, the drains.
Yeah, that, that true, that is very true.
Would it be different if? Separate the load on wastewater?
Well, you would, you would have the revenue to correct and modify to your, you know, within your C I Ps and within your infrastructure.
So one of the things you might want, and I've seen this happen in other communities, if uh, if you had uh, an A D U that connected to the primary structure, you're still looking at, what are you charging for S D Cs? System development charges for that accessory dwelling unit, sewer, water storm, transportation. Some communities don't have transportation, but you can go back and look at that. Some communities do a discount for A D Us because the demand on the system is less than, you know, a typical full-size house because there is a cap on the square footage. Um, or some communities charge it just like they do a regular detached single family. Again, that's kind of outside of the development code because that's over dealing with your S D Cs. But that is a way to address your revenue issue.
What was the limitation on square footages for the A D U?
Fifty percent of the primary dwelling unit and not more than a thousand.
Less than, I think it was thousand, less than a thousand or nine hundred or something.
Yeah, or feet.
So just, I think that that is a good thing to maybe have a discussion with Walt.
Yeah.
Moving forward, and we could readdress that and have a report drawn up maybe for a, for a future meeting.
Agreed, just a topic that, yeah, we'll tackle.
Okay. Um, does council have any other questions at this point for, for these two? All right, so we're going to, we, we're kind of doing this a little bit out of order tonight, but we're, so we're going to go back into this. Uh, what I'd like to do now, after hearing that, I would like to um, uh, reopen the public comment period. Um, and to find out if there was anybody that was, um, any public comments in favor of this. Yep.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that we also are able to present the planning commission recommendations at some point.
Oh, yes, could we actually, would, would it be, but I think it would be a good idea to do that before we, yes, I think as well, thank you for that.
Okay, um, well, thank you for having us here tonight, um, counselors and mayor. Um, I'm just going to retouch on a few uh, highlights that have already been mentioned, but this is a project funded by D L C D grants. Um, I'm just gonna retouch on a few highlights that have already been mentioned, but this is a project funded by DLCD grants. And it had three components. One was code updates, residential and downtown. One was the comprehensive plan updates. That's what is in your adoption package tonight. As Doug mentioned, we also prepared a buildable lands inventory. That's a report and information for you for the future. Um, but not part of the adoption package. And then I just want to reemphasize what Doug said about the code audit. Doug did a really thorough job in auditing the code and there's a lot, you know, due to the time and funds for this effort. We're not able to cover all the different items that were identified in that code audit. Um, but that's a kind of document that you have to take with you if you want to pursue future grants and, and do more work on the code. Um, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Doug to touch on the, I think, four recommendations from planning commission. If you can bring up the PowerPoint, please. Thank you.
So after the planning commission hearing, so they had their, opened their hearing and then they continued it. At the continued hearing, they came up with a set of proposed modifications. The first one dealt with the definition of lot. Uh, that was proposed in title 10. And what we'd done is we'd actually taken the definition in title 11 and copied it over and put it into 10. Uh, but they wanted to add the words, uh, as is. Um, so it would read, a lot means a unit of land that is created by a subdivision of land or tract of land. Having a frontage upon a street and is occupied or to be occupied by a building or unit. Root of buildings and his accessory structures. So we had to make that change in two places, both in title 10 and in title 11. Under manufactured homes, uh, they suggested adding at the end of that definition. The words and constructed after June 15th, 1976. So older than 76 are mobile homes. June 15th and moving forward are manufactured homes. Uh, in 10.20, 0.010, the purpose statement, uh, they look for some clarifications and we talked about this. And what they wanted to make the modification is to say, the target density is 5.4 to 20 dwelling units per acre. What had been proposed was 3.3. If you actually do the math, 3.3 is correct. But I understand their logic by saying 5.4 because that's the minimum. So, um, we did that modification. Council already brought up the issue about the sign posting, so we've talked about that. So that was a new subsection A, and then we had to renumber the following subsections of that portion. And then in B, lot definitions, um, I indicated we had to make that add the two words and is. Under the building standards, and so this was for your downtown. Uh, the planning commission suggested to keep in the language that said subsection three building design. Buildings shall be similar in character and design with existing structures. So those were the planning commission recommended changes.
Is that all, all the, do you have there?
That's, that's all, all the changes that they recommended to what originally was proposed.
All right, so I'm just gonna read a little bit about this, the public hearing purpose before we continue. So the purpose of this hearing is to review the changes, take public comment, deliberate and consider the recommendation for the legislative changes. The applicable criteria and the findings are listed in the city staff report, which we've heard. Uh, testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards the criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulations. Whichever testifier believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue, uh, accompanied statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties. And opportunity to respond to the issues precludes appeal to the board and based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments or testimony. The council will decide whether the hearing will be continued to another date or left open for at least seven days. Would anybody on council like to announce an actual potential conflict of interest? We've already heard the staff report. Uh, that was in our pack as well. We've done the public comment.
When you asked to.
We're, we're going, we're going to get there for you, 100%. So we can go, we can move back into the public comment now. So the council will now take public testimony, uh, on the proposed amendment. Will recognize speakers with questions. It should be addressed through me. When you begin to speak, state your name, city of residence for the record. For those people who wish to speak online, raise your hand. You will be announcing whether you're in favor, against or neutral. If you're on Zoom, again, raise your hand, uh, to alert staff that you're there. And we'll start with the folks that are here. Please confine your remarks to the proposed action. Um, and avoid repetitious and irrelevant information. Go ahead, Mr. Lawford.
Uh, Mike Lawford, Laurel Street. I just have a comment on the ADUs.
Was it were you proposed neutral or against? Beautiful.
Just have a comment on the ADUs and connecting directly, uh, to our water system sewer system versus going through the resident. If the ADU then becomes a rental and the primary residence decides to quit paying their water bill. Are you going to shut them off, thus shutting off the rental on the back also? Who has, who's probably paying the primary resident for their water and sewer access. So that's something you might consider when you decide whether you're gonna let them connect directly or through the property. I've seen it in the past. We've seen it here. Probably have a few of that going on right now. That was it.
Thank you very much. Were there any other public comments on this application? In favor, against, neutral? We have anybody online?
No.
Does staff have any response to the testimony? You guys are staff still.
That's always a possibility. Uh, I'm not thoroughly.
Can I, can I make a comment?
You are. Yes, Angie.
Uh, I, I, I apologize, but I used to work in property management and it's the landlord's responsibility to provide habitability to the tenants. So the tenants, you know, it would be the landlord's responsibility to pay the bill. So it's not the city's responsibility to decide if the renter, they would shut off the, if the bill's not being paid, then the tenant would go to the landlord for that.
And I do think that Jason bringing up the question about bringing that to Walt. It sounds like that's a more detailed question. That's gonna require some thought from the city. We may want to. So for me, I think that that's just something that we could, we could bring later as opposed to going to the minutia, change of the details of that this very moment. I don't know how, how's council feel?
Yeah, I think it's good. I mean, because like they said, there's gonna be changes along the way. And there's nothing saying that you can't make those changes.
100% that so, um, what these folks have done is they've done an amazing job of putting together quite a bit of information for us and updating our codes. Uh, and like you said, you're never gonna get it perfect the first time. And we are running in some timelines with, uh. As we were paid for this study through a grant.
Right.
Which I believe the paperwork needs to be turned in right away.
Yeah.
So if we can get that done, um, so again, we can still make changes for it. So if anybody wanted to make that change on council, that's something that we could add into it. Um, or we could, again, we do have our city planner available to us who could, would help us make those changes. And have meetings with, with, uh, public works to address any of the issues that might come up.
And I think it'd be a good idea, Jason, if you could, you know, maybe go to one of the planning meetings and address that. And explain what your concern is.
Yeah, like to Shay's point, I think we'll, we'll soft pitch basically to Walt and we'll introduce it through planning, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And thank you for the help with that, Angie. So, uh, staff's response to testimony, I think we've done that. Uh, does council have any other questions? Okay. Um, and then we will have an opportunity to deliberate after this hearing, before we do any voting. Really, right? Yes. All right, so if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
I second the motion.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Public hearing section, so now we're gonna move into council discussion. We, so do we have further discussion? I have one thing that I want to talk about. I appreciated all the work that planning did and certainly what these gentlemen have done. The one thing that I was not quite as happy with was the, uh, the change in the setbacks, the R1 housing. Uh, it's currently at seven and a half feet and it's proposed to be moved to five feet, which is. In all our other neighborhoods are still five feet, the, the new developments at five feet. I would, I would like to see. That stay the same as it is now at seven and a half feet, not shrink.
I'm gonna comment on that. When the subdivision, the line over here off of 240. Was initially. In the process of, of being built, the developer or builder or whoever was. Addressed the fact that he wanted to change the lot line between. The three car garage homes to five feet because of the additional space for the garages. So that was approved for the homes that had the three car garages, but that was it. Somewhere along the line, after that subdivision was built. The lot line was changed. According to. Angie sent me something and I didn't bring it with me, but it specifically says five feet on there.
So if I understand correctly, R1 is the only one that currently has seven and a half feet. The rest of them would, they were changed years ago. So with that, that could very well be the case.
In 2020 or something to that effect.
I couldn't speak to that particular instance, but what, what we're dealing with now is the R1. And whether we want to move all of our residential.
I think, I think it's a horrendous idea of fire wise and privacy wise and whatever else.
Yeah, but you also have an opinion. I mean, maybe we could look to our councillor Featherstone too, uh, you know, the firefighting aspect.
If you leave it as it is, they're just gonna keep asking. I mean, well, I mean, we don't have any progress right now, but.
Right.
They'll ask to, for another variance or whatever. If I remember correctly, it was kind of like a negotiation.
It was a variance for the three car garage in you.
Like a negotiating part from there and to, in order to get the. Space maybe, I don't remember exactly, but to get, in order to get something that we wanted. They, I feel like.
Well, there'd always be an opportunity for a variance on these things, so that would go before planning commission. And then, you know, potentially before council again. Did you have thoughts, Chris?
No, I mean, five and five is 10. I mean, that's, that's enough.
Five and five with the fence is still five.
Right.
Right, so maybe.
I mean, it's not like it's all level.
On the side and a firefighter was trying to get by, I mean, that's exactly how it would look like.
Yeah, but the seven and a half. Which is weird because I, when we were looking at separating our giant lot into two lots, we were told it was eight. And so the fact that seven and a half or the variance is what's going on for the new subdivision is five is kind of surprising.
Well, the ones over here are five feet.
Yeah.
And that's very small. Door to door. I mean, each, their doors are next to each other, not the garages. Which is tight. I mean, that's tight. You know, 10 feet, I mean, but here, here's a cup of sugar. He could reach out their window.
Building code is building code.
Like they're, I think they'd know or aware of that by it.
That's true. You would know that. Didn't be in the garden. Does anybody have thoughts on it, just being?
No, I, I agree with you. I think the further apart the better.
I'm indifferent.
Indifferent. Straw pulling on this.
It's way too close for my taste, but I mean, you know what you're getting when you buy something.
Sure. Well, seven and a half is the widest minimums, if that makes sense. Um, people can always have more, but you can't have less.
Yeah.
And so my thinking is, again, I don't, I mean, you're my neighbor and I don't really want you any closer than.
I mean, I'm 20 feet from my neighbor, so you know.
I did speak with the planning chair today on this topic. And he said that they also had a decent amount of discussion, but decided to move forward with it at five feet. Um, he said that certainly there's nobody on planning that he could think of that would be upset if we wanted to leave it at seven and a half. But that's completely up to you guys.
Like I said, the further, the further away, you know, I don't want my neighbor five feet from me. I mean, you know.
Well, let's rephrase this maybe. So in, in just a moment here, when we're just done with our discussion, we'll have an opportunity. So in that opportunity with, assuming there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion at that point. And then we can approve this as recommended by the planning commission or as amended by the council. And then we'll state the revisions and list.
Okay.
Is anybody opposed to having the seven and a half be the, the rule? You would be okay with that? And again, these are all things that we could readdress at a later date if there was some.
Yeah, well, and if somebody ended up with a weird sized lot or something.
And then you could get a variance.
They can get a variance.
Right, or if there was a physical, natural anomaly that would create a, right, that could all be addressed and planned in.
Like a 100 year old tree or something. They don't want to chop down, so they want a weird variance.
So. We can, if it's okay, we'll be listing, leave the seven and a half foot side setback. Was there any other changes that council wanted to make? Or is, is there anybody here that we just absolutely doesn't like anything that's happened here?
Doug, are you able to. Um, explain to me a little for, or clarify the, the net density part of kind of like.
So, uh, one acre is 43,560 square feet.
Okay.
Uh, and typically, if you're building a residential, you have ride away dedication requirements. So you take 25% of that one acre and say that's gonna be attributed to public pieces of way. So when you start with the whole acre, that's your gross density. When you reduce it after you dedicate the ride away, that, where you get your net density.
Okay.
And so what we were proposing in your comprehensive plan and your development regulations is you didn't have explicitly any density standards. So Steve put together a table that goes in your comp plan and then in your different residential zones. We established what the target density was. So that was based on the gross.
Okay. And so there was, but what, it was 3.3 for?
Well, and so that's an odd zone. So in your, I believe it was in your R3 that we've re-titled as your mixed residential. Because you have all these different type of residential activities. You've got your single family, you've got your duplexes, and then you go into three, you go to your third. Um, kind of line or category, and then the table had, if you had uh, three units or more. It, you you had an addition of square feet that you needed to do, so. I had to put together a table, and when you put together the table, if you were just doing single family or duplex. Uh, it came out at five point four, but if you started to do the math and you rolled in multifamily development into that. It lowered it down to three point three, and that's why the planning commission said, well, that doesn't sound right. And so I even went back after the meeting and looked at my table again, did I do bad math? It's like, no, the math is correct. But it's simple, it's simpler just to say your minimum target is five point four, your maximum is twenty. And then that covers the range of all the different types of residential that you could do in your mixed residential zone.
Were you feeling pretty good? Angie, are you still with us?
I am.
Uh, I was just curious here, so. If we were to vote on this and pass it tonight, that would, we would still need to have it available to the public ten days. We would have to, we'd have to have a a reading on July ninth as well.
Yes, you can make a motion for an an ordinance. Um, and then I could have the ordinance written up um, for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So as I have it here, it would just be the side setbacks as a change in R one, in R one.
And currently now it is R two that has the five foot setbacks. That's the only zone that has the five foot setbacks.
So then except for R two.
No, it would just be making the change in the R one to just leave the seven and a half. Um, looking at the R two. You already have a, a five, five foot side yard setback in your R two zone, and we propose no change that we left it as it is. So based up on the mayor's uh, discussion and the overall council, it'd just be changing the R one, leaving it at seven point five. And removing out the five foot, easy change.
Okay, so with that, is there any further discussion? So the city council can either accept in whole, part, or not at all, the PC recommendation changes. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, you ready? Yeah, I make a motion for the first second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance. Adopting legislative amendments to the municipal code titles ten, eleven, thirteen, and the comprehensive plan. As amended by the council stating revisions, an R one leaves seven point five feet side setback.
We have a second.
Ask you a second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Is counsel ready to vote? Yes.
Can I clarify, are you um, accepting the proposed changes for the planning commission?
We are accepting, yes, I believe that's what we were trying to state.
Okay.
So, no, we, so Angie, we were not, we were. The the recommendations by the planning commission and admit, so it would be. A little bit different than what I have here on the script, so it'd be rec- accepting the recommendations of the planning commission and as revised by council. Would you like us to reread that?
If you could, please.
That would be lovely.
Same thing, okay. Okay, I make a motion for the first second readings by title only. An adoption of the ordinance adopting legislative amendments to the municipal code titles ten, eleven, thirteen, and the comprehensive plan. As amended by the council. And recommended by planning commission to leave seven point five. Feet foot side setback. In R one.
We have a second.
Ask you a second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? We good, Angie?
Yes.
Yep, so if council's ready to vote?
Uh, Featherstone, I.
Ask you.
Corrigan, I.
Ken, I.
Karen, I.
As the motion is passed unanimously, the ordinance must be made available to the public ten days prior to the first reading for adoption in a single meeting. Or unless it be read at two separate meetings, we will hold the first reading for adoption the next council meeting, July ninth. Twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M, council chambers. And that concludes our hearing. Woo, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we will, uh, I will do in the next couple of days, I have commitments tomorrow, but. Get up early on Friday, I'll make that one change. Uh, I will give back to Steve, he will get to the city. Uh, your track changes with that one change in it, and then per your grant, I also have to give you. A complete clean version that removes all of the track changes, so, but those are our next steps.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, guys, for your watch.
Thank you.
Unless you really want to stay and hear the rest of our meeting.
Gonna go home and get some dinner.
I appreciate all of your help with this. We would now move into department reports. Uh, for administration. Do you have anything for administration? So administration, uh, the ARPA funds, the COVID money, the reporting is a hundred percent filed now. We had some hiccups with that as it had not been filed in apparently ever. Uh, that was caught and corrected by staff, uh, we expect that to be closed out soon. Uh, the D L C D grant, which we just went through here, has been completed and we will be submitting for reimbursement tomorrow. Um, a lot of work by everybody in staff to get that done. Uh, we did receive the grant award from the EPA for the Merkley money, so that is finally a done deal. Um, we've been working with uh, Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA on the grant for the water tank. Um, changes have been made at the federal level that are making that grant look like it will not come to complete fruition. Due to changes in grant extensions, which were part of a multi-phase rollout of that plan. Uh, however, we have not heard back from uh, Oregon Emergency Management, but we are still holding on to hope that we will get that project complete. Worked with chief today, in fact, on I T company replacement, we had a meeting today with a local provider. As a, uh, our former city administrator was moving towards Kaiser, but that is not going to be an option for the city. Um, Angie's been working on updating the master fee schedule as well as, uh. She and I have been working on the uh, transient lodging taxes, we should have language coming up for. Maybe the next council meeting, if not August, there's a lot more to that than I think anybody realized. Um, and then all the other things that staff does that I haven't, they can completely be on me, they're keeping this place running like a top, so, amazing.
What happened with the Kaiser thing?
Um, Kaiser never was actually able to accommodate us without hiring more staff. So I think there was some hope being placed into that, that they were going to be able to hire staff, that was their desire and their budget. However, their budget committee said that would not happen, and so they said you should probably find somebody else. We moved on to, we were looking at um, a couple of local companies, um, Alexa Net is looking like uh. Somebody that we we talked to today that would be um, potentially able to handle our needs, and they handle some other municipalities. And fire departments, and they're actually looking to work with our fire department here in Seattle, so it might be a good thing.
Has anybody talked to any of the. Whoever that they work with or that they are working with right now to see if.
We just, chief and I just got their pitch today, so all of those things will be happening in upcoming days. But yeah, for sure. Dayton and Lafayette, and yeah, the fire district, and yeah. So with that. We have the police department reports.
Thank you, Matt, everyone has a copy of the stats in the staff report, any questions from anyone? Well, things going well for the police department, we um, did apply, I'll be talking with Jason, he doesn't know that yet, but he's. Probably sees it coming for the uh, a permit through ODOT for the everyday parade. We do have that, so we're talking with Jason about getting things set up like we do every year. Um, with the barricades and everything to make sure that that transition goes smoothly for traffic. So it's like, I've been working on it for a while, and ODOT changed their process for the application, which. I always like to see it, it went backwards, it used to be online and now it's like all paper, so that was concerning and. But I've been working on it for a couple of months now, and we received word that the application was approved with a permit. Very great, so that was something off of my plate, and again, I'll be working with public works, they always do a great job of. Getting things set up and making sure that the community is safe, traffic flow is good and everything. I also uh, correspond with the sheriff's office, as they do every year, to have cadets come out to assist. Things were even shorter staffed and couldn't support that staff wise as it was in the past, so. The sheriff's office uh, will be helping us with with traffic control during that event. Uh, I wanted to let everyone know that staff speaking for them as well as myself, especially that. Uh, Mayor Corrigan's been doing a lot, and we do appreciate it, and. I know that your, like, well, correction, your platter is already full, so we appreciate everything that you're doing in. In this uh, process of getting things that were moving along or that were stalled, continue to move in the right direction, so.
Thank you for saying that.
Staff appreciates that, I appreciate that, and I don't know if all of council knows all that you've been doing, but I did notice you did do it. Uh, I think the post officer, you have your mail forwarded to here now. That's okay to do for a temporary thing, don't make that a permanent thing.
No, I actually, on the desk that I borrow in the office, it actually, with the nameplate says, I don't work here.
True. We all recommend a a pay raise for what you're doing, so.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. So thank you, Mayor, we appreciate it, and I speak for all of staff.
Thank you.
For everything you're doing. So, everything else is going well, that's expected under the circumstances of things, um. So appreciate the support of staff and and all the work the staff has been doing, as you suggested also, that that I see it. It keeps the wheels turning for the city, and there's a lot of behind the scenes things that go on that. That council or Mayor doesn't know about, but keep things moving along and, so, pretty good team, I appreciate all of them.
Thank you, public works.
Yeah, speaking in regards to water, um, right now we're running around four hundred and forty gallons, is that correct, Joe? So that's what's coming into the plant currently. Uh, we've, we're dealing with some telemetry issues up there right now that we're trying to fix through automation group, um, possibly looking into bringing on. A temporary automation group to kind of help us through the telemetry issues we're having between the reservoir and the water plant, um. As far as leaks are concerned, I mean, we've, there again, been really aggressive trying to find them, uh, we did find a hydrant that was. Noted to be inactive, that which is currently active, it was boxed over off by Fruit Hill and. It's running a hundred percent, so Fruit Hill, Highway two forty there has two. Fire hydrants side by side that are completely operational, um. Putting a sidewalk in also on two forty, connecting those two points, um. Some of you might know there's no permanent address to it, but there is a point there where it just ramps down to gravel and. Ramps back up, so we're making those two connections, uh, that's all in-house work. Um, as far as streets are concerned, I mean, the crew, uh, our utility workers have done a phenomenal job with patchwork and. Kind of finding points, soft points or seeking sinking points within the street that we've been cutting out and permanently fixing instead of just. Patching back with temporary asphalt, um. Wastewater, we're looking into there again, the disinfection room, um. We took it out to bid, we had no bidders on that project, so we're gonna have to take it back out to bid to see if we can lure anybody in to. Get that project up and running before our discharge year comes around or discharge point, um. The lagoons look great, I mean, we did a wonderful job this year exercising those and getting all the pumps. To their max operational point. And along with that, the last thing I wanted to bring up, what is the circumstance that Sheridan had a few weeks ago? Um, they did have a break, they had to shut down their school, a couple other commercial buildings. And one thing was brought up in that clipping and just talking was communication. And the staff did a wonderful job there and shared in getting communication out there as far as. Social media, um, the one missing point they had in that relay. Was the people that didn't service to the level with social media, so I'm gonna put this on Patty, I know she came up with a. What was it called again, Patty, sorry, forgive me.
Phone tree?
The phone tree, and I would encourage you, not only ask, that maybe you get together a cert. And maybe put together a small booth or just kind of piggyback off what they have, if it's possible, and just kind of put that. Phone tree together, that, so our city staff admin can have that in case an emergency like that happens, because.
Well, in regards to that, um, yes, I did, I did get a phone tree started. And I was. Needless to say, shocked. At the amount of people that did not respond to it. But I was anticipating. Fifty or so people, but that's not even anywhere near what it is.
That's great, I mean, I just want the city and. As a whole, I mean, we've always shown our due diligence and everything we've done. I just don't want there to be loopholes missed if we have an emergency of that extreme or that level, so as long as we're. Putting ourselves out there and asking for those requests, that's all we can do.
Well, and if in the event anything were to happen, somebody from the city is supposed to contact me. And then I will then. Be calling everybody on my list.
Sounds great, it sounds like all bases are covered, and that, it's, I just.
As long as everybody, as long as whoever remembers to give me a call, then I will be calling the people that. Have responded, you know, to me for that phone tree, I don't care if it's, you know, two people or a hundred people. I made sure that they understood that I would be calling them and that. Their numbers are not gonna be going out to everybody and their brother in the city, so I've got that list.
Appreciate it. Other than that, I didn't have anything, so.
But just added that, Jason, also is that the city has a vendor that we're able to. Communicate with the public as well as our dispatch center.
Okay.
Has resources in an event of an emergency like that, where they can push things out as long as people are signed up for it.
Perfect.
So there's resources.
That's good, good to know.
And if it's dire emergency, you can do a reverse nine one one, push them out, even if they're not signed up.
Well, great, so there's all things.
There's resources, but you just gotta talk to the right people, yeah.
Kind of like we got all of our bases covered.
Um, at one point, public works was talking about putting on the city website, something that showed how much water we were. Coming in and cleaning it, and I just looked, it's not there. They're still working on getting that.
During curtailments, we were doing that.
Oh, okay.
So just out of curiosity in regards to that, the curtailments, how far does it have to be, how far down does it have to be before. That will be addressed.
I'll back up to Chris's and then I'll get to that. If that's something the council wants, I mean, you can enact that, and then we can start showing you guys a graphing of like, you know, just a a simple. What we're bringing in, what's going out, I mean, if that's something you guys want to see, it's easy to do.
Is that something that we could see, say, June through fall rain?
Right, if that's what you guys want, that's what I'm saying, we'll, we'll deliver that and we'll get it over to Angie or whomever's controlling that.
But if it's there.
Easy to produce.
If it's.
Keep being honest with that.
Well, it's, it's, there's not that much lifting involved, so that's something you want done, something we can do.
Well, I think if it's done like now, then it's just, it's there and you're just changing your files, right, so. No, like writing a new report, changing the files, if it's all.
I just.
On the spot.
Tagged it and send it, Angie, what we just, per week is what we're doing before, or daily, whatever you want.
So it's a manual process, there's nothing automated that's to be put down, yeah, it's a manual process.
We'll get it automated there.
Try and automate it something that is connected, but, okay.
But a very positive thing that I just saw on the website that you, nobody's brought up, is the fact that we compare water bills online.
But a very positive thing that I just saw on the website that you nobody's brought up is the fact that we can pay our water bills online. I do have to pay a little bit extra to pay with the credit card through the online thing, but it beats having to call. When you're working shift work and making sure you call when they're open and stuff, so that is a good thing.
That is a good thing. But a moment coming, but it's.
It's been a long time coming, so.
So Patty, what what did you have, did you have a question then?
Yeah, so as far as. Putting a notice out there for people to start paying attention to the amount of water they use, at what level? Or gallons do you start showing that, that or having people pay attention to the amount of?
Once, once, and I'm gonna put it the way I would put it, once once we see that streaming current monitor start to drop. Then that's when we. Get the information out to Angie, once we see that start to drop and I know, I mean, this has been a discussion between Kyle and I for years, it's just we. And that's the way I like to judge it because that's actual live, what we're getting, a live feed, what that creek is producing, it isn't just a guesstimation. It's it's tech doing it to what tech does, so that's how that language works for us um. It's about as simple as I can put it, I'd like to add on to, but that's right where that's.
At this point, we're doing.
We're doing good, we're doing good. Doing fine, that's right.
All right, anything else for Public Works? Uh it looks like we do not have committee reports this month, so that's. Uh mayor's report, felt like I kind of just gave one. Do we have any council reports?
I do.
Good, what do you got?
So I reached out to Carlton in regards to collaborating with, you know, the school. And I got an email back with. Kind of assertive language in it, I'll put it that way, so I responded back. And then it went dead silence, so I was gonna just go to their council meeting on the second, but when I looked back in there, it was actually on the third. Well, I already had a commitment on the third, so I couldn't go, so.
I did speak to their mayor about it, she's aware of it, and I told her that you were gonna be talking with her, so.
Really? Okay, well, then I will go to their council meeting on next month. And I will talk to him about it, obviously, nothing's gonna happen until school starts again. Because the school is the one that's gonna be doing it, so yeah, and this, just so that you all know. I am. I am talking with the school. And trying to make this not a huge ordeal, because if that's the case, then it's gonna cost the city money. To help them. You know, make this a, I'm trying to keep it a small. Informative situation.
Oh, your publication school?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay.
Because the more they have to, the more it grows, the more it's gonna cost. And they obviously, like a lot of other schools and cities, don't have the funds. Cause they pay somebody evidently to to help with this. Anyway, so that's how I'm going to approach it with Carlton also. That it's just an informative kind of thing for everybody. Okay, is that good?
It is.
Okay, and then the other thing is. Has anybody gone over to the post office and then come back up this way and tried to see the traffic coming from? Carlton? With the store flag right there, that big black. Flag that sits right on the corner, you, do any of you all have any problem seeing cars coming from that direction? Yeah, well, because I sit so low in my car and it's so low to the ground, I was. In the street past the crosswalk before I could see actually cars coming from that direction. So I don't know.
There's ODOT requirements on that, so I think I could look into.
Well, it's not that it's. It's just that it's sitting away from the building and because it's a wider flag.
That's also why planning asked them to have an angle on that building, right, so that's part of the city code. So that's something we should look into, because it doesn't seem to matter to me whether you have a building there or a flag there.
Yeah.
If former people on the planning commission decided that you needed to be able to see on that corner.
Yeah, well, and and it just depends on where they put it, because it's it's not always an issue. It just so happened that the other day when I came that way, I thought, are you really kidding me that it's that far out? So anyway, so that was an issue and then um. Does anybody, did anybody notice that they cleaned up the Little Red House next to the bank? Nobody knew, nobody saw that?
I did not.
Yeah, so I was asked if it was the city that did it, I said, yeah, I don't think so. No, somebody came today and cleaned up all.
Just today.
Just today.
Angie's got.
I did speak with the owner about that and I'm glad to hear that he did clean it up.
Yeah. Whoever out there all along the whole side next to the bank, they cleaned it all up all the way to the very back. And across the front and that poor house is gonna rot away if somebody doesn't buy it. It's sad.
Is that for council reports?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, moving along to business. Uh we're gonna go back to resolution eight through three eight, so the police service fee. We moved that from the consent agenda to be discussed further. So uh if we do want to pass that, we need to have a motion and a vote. And Patty, what was your concerns?
My concern is there's no indication as to what the increase would be yearly. It just says that there'll be an increase.
It said in the actual ordinance, something about CPI, but I don't have a copy of it and this isn't logged in where I can see previous stuff.
There is a formula and if I remember correctly, it's supposed to be adjusted in, oh, go ahead, Ash. You muted.
She's muted. Angie.
She's saying.
She's talking and not multitasking very well.
Sorry, I'm used to being in the room. So it is based on the CPI U West C indexed figure published by the federal government yearly. And that's in the ordinance, the ordinance is not changing, this is just the resolution. Um putting into motion what you voted on in the last meeting, which was to increase it that uh that lump sum. To catch up with the missed increases.
All right, so did that satisfy? So with that, can we get a motion on R eight three eight?
So what was our motion?
So we would be either, we would move to. Approve that resolution adjusting that P uh uh PSF. And establishing a schedule for review, or we could say that we've changed our mind since last meeting. And vote no.
I make a motion to approve resolution R eight three eight, revolution compensating for omitted police service fee increases. And establishing a schedule for new increases in the future.
We have a second?
My second motion.
Can we get a vote?
Heather's and I.
That's yeah.
Oregon I.
Can die.
Far die.
It is passed unanimously. Uh moving on to business, this was formally A, so this is to consider a request to add more garbage receptacles to the city park, I assume. Yula, as it's Jim Phillips who was asking, um in the community club. My assumption is is that they, the community club would be providing these garbage cans and I certainly wouldn't have a problem. If the community club wanted to buy more garbage cans.
Do they know that would be?
Well, I mean, I assume they do, but so Jim was unable to make it tonight, um I believe that his wife was also unavailable. Um Kathy Phillips. Do you know anything, Brian?
Uh I don't know anything about that, I'm I'm the vice president of the community club.
Okay, um do you, did you, you do any discussions on garbage cans and Yula?
No, no, there seems to be, there's like only two or three. Formal locations, it would be nice to have more, but I don't know, I I missed, I apparently missed the discussion about that.
Okay. Well, I don't know how council feels about it, but I would be in favor, uh the community club was just asking permission to put in more garbage cans to absolutely let them do that.
Yeah, is that for all the time, cause it does make Public Works the ones cleaning it up, right, so that's extra man hours.
What size is the garbage can, you know, like, we'd have to know quite a bit more, I mean, we have to pay for the garbage bags, we have to pay for the labor.
Okay.
Uh I mean, I think.
We pay for it to get to recology because we have to take it to a large dumpster.
Okay.
So it's not like, I mean, it's it's quite a.
Was that something that you would be interested in discussing with? The community club and.
Jim was here to kinda share his thoughts with that.
Well, so see next meeting would be the ninth, so it'd be pre derby days. Why don't we just uh?
But we have the temporary ones for that, like the.
Is there four up there right now, there's one by the basketball court, there's one by each.
By the play structure area.
One by there and then there's one each of the covered areas.
Yeah, right.
And then there's the two doggy poo ones too, so. And then each side of the bathrooms, so.
Are they full, Jason?
That's a lot.
Are there, are they full when you pick them up?
I mean, it varies, I mean, it's. They show up on, they show up on Monday, say, they're full, I mean, three out of the three.
So why don't we do this, why don't we, since Tim's not here to actually clarify on that, maybe we can. Get him next council meeting if it needs to go before council. Would would or council can direct staff to approve or not approve new garbage cans?
Say up to two, it wouldn't make it too much more for you guys without it being more for, I don't know.
But I mean, if they're not of them being utilized now.
There's too many.
Well, by by Monday morning, they're full on during all summer long, most of them.
But normally there are events that are planned.
Right.
Up there where there's large groups.
Until what Grayman's saying, with large groups usually are are supposed to take their own trash out.
That's true.
So.
We have.
And and to Tim's point, at some point, there's just too many garbage cans up there, aesthetically, that it just looks like you have garbage cans everywhere.
Everywhere.
And plus during derby days and large events such as that, the one event, they bring a dumpster up there.
There's a lot more.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, really, it just generates cost to the city because the garbage bags aren't cheap, I know it sounds funny, but they. Get expensive after a while and then labor is just.
Well, I think that maybe that's something that, you know, for the next, till the next meeting, we can have some conversations with the community club. So is Avery good with that?
Yes.
Having community club do it?
Maybe they just don't wanna walk so far to the garbage can. So they walk more up there so they don't have to walk so far. I don't know.
Well, let's move it to the next, so now this is the big one, you guys ready for this? So next would be resolution R eight four zero, it's a resolution to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty six fiscal year budget. Does anybody have discussions on the budget that would? That we haven't already had? Everybody good on the budget?
No. I'm not.
Okay.
I mean.
You're on the budget committee?
I am.
We we had how many meetings?
I know.
Did you bring those things up then?
Um the discussion that you and I had was that it they would be addressed, but. My concern is, is that. There was absolutely no discussion, and I said this in one of the budget meetings, about any. Cuts to anything with things soon, and that's a real concern that I have because with. Except the only cuts that were done were associated with AJ and Shelley. And as you all know, all cities are having issues with budgets, every city that's. Even addressed is having problems with budgets and I. And no, they wouldn't be something that people would like, but. I wrote a where we could save approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year. And yes, it would mean some cuts to things. But none of that was addressed. And borrowing money. From the development committee or wherever it is and then paying that back, I think it's just the wrong way to do it. So yeah, I have, I have a real, a real problem with passing something. That the whole picture wasn't addressed. So that's my comment.
So I'm sorry that you felt like you didn't have a voice in those meetings.
Well, it's, it I I made the comment, but the only thing that anybody, you know, commented back on. Was the fact that, oh, we, you know, we want everybody to get a at least a three percent increase, well, I'm sorry, but. You know, that's the wrong way to look at things when you have a budget that that is not balancing by any means. Not by any, any way.
Well, but except that they did present a balanced budget.
Somewhat.
Well, no, I mean, by legal and literal definition, that was.
But that still doesn't leave the city, and I said this also in one of the meetings, was that God forbid. If something were to happen, we would be in a world of hurt, a world of hurt. So. That's my comment.
Anybody have comments or? Like to respond to Patty? Just me?
Well, it goes back to happy employees, you keep them, it's gonna cost less overall if you keep your employees rather than having to. Get a new wastewater treatment person and then train them and and a lot of that stuff, so. Yes, it is hard when you give people their their raises, but. We also pay people less in the M L than a lot of other places, and so if we can. Keep them happy by some, you know, a little bit of a raise. And hopefully, like they said, they budgeted under what they're expecting hopefully for taxes, so hopefully we do get more. And hopefully we get some of these grants to help out in some other ways too, um. You know, Jason is doing really good on saving money for the water and stuff so that there is some cushion. For repairs and things like that as they're necessary.
Okay, well, let me give you an example and I'm not gonna, I'm not going to. I'm just, I'm just gonna give you an example. For. Normal state or majority of employers within Oregon. People get. One hour of protected sick time for every thirty hours they work or one point one three hours for forty hours. That's one third. Of what the city here gives, one third. So. That right there is about, and I'm I'm gonna use, even if it was double that, it would still be. A sixty five. I don't know if I brought that paper lifting or not. It would be a sixty five, sixty five or sixty eight thousand dollars a year savings if that was cut down. And then as far as holidays, the majority get eight days per year. It's thirteen here. And then medical, you know, paying for medical premiums. There again, you know, it's. And and I went off of. What I could find online. But it was still almost three hundred bucks a month for just an employee. So these are areas that could, that we potentially could save. But absolutely, none of those are addressed. And yes, I I understand keeping employees is important. And I'm not saying that. It was when I calculated different things, it wasn't anywhere near this drastic. And it would still save about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So are you wanting to take away health insurance?
No, I'm not saying take away health insurance. No, I'm saying have them help pay, have a premium for their health insurance. It's, and, and trust me, I looked all over online to find any company in the state of Oregon. That paid one hundred percent of their employees.
But did you look at other municipalities?
The whole state of Oregon, there were two major companies.
But I'm not talking about companies. I was asking about municipalities.
No, I'm talking about all employers within the state of Oregon, all employers.
Including cities?
Yes.
Okay.
And there was none.
But you can't pay someone barely above minimum wage. Then expect, let me finish. I let you talk. And then expect them to continue to pay more for health insurance. That's just asinine.
But the only ones that are anywhere close to minimum wage are public works. They're the only ones. And no, I'm not saying that they are getting paid what they should be be, being paid at all. They should be the ones that are getting the, the increases. Because they are far below. The actual city hall staff. Anyway, my point of the whole thing is, is that there could have been cuts made. That. And I'm not saying drastic ones, but there could have been some cuts made. That could have saved potentially right around a hundred thousand dollars.
So you know that. By passing a budget, that doesn't mean you spend that money necessarily. Another question I have for, did you not vote yes on the budget to?
The last time I did, but the pri- the previous time, no, I didn't.
Okay, so but you voted yes to send this to council?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we all get to vote, so why?
But in the meantime. You know, I was.
If I had a motion.
Hoping.
Make a motion.
That it would have been addressed, but it hasn't been.
So before we make, make a motion, Patty, I think, so what you're talking about to me sounds like very. Deep and serious policy changes, which is in the purview of council.
Yeah.
So those are things that can be brought up. Where we are right now is we have a, um, so our next council meeting. Will be July ninth, which will be into the next fiscal year.
Right.
So if we do not have a budget that's been approved. We would be, I believe, um. They get, we would be in a funding, we, we, we have no funding for the, for our government. Again, any of these policies that you would like to have changed, I would encourage for you to make a list, get it to Angie. Before the next meeting and we can have those into new business. We can discuss those policies in depth at, at that time. All see, I'm sure. Or and, and charter. So some of those items would be, yes, would affect the city charter. But again, not outside of the purview of council and those, that's part of. What your job is, is to make sure that we have the, the proper. Uh, policies and, and have the charter updated to reflect where we are. So maybe we can have you submit that. Or maybe others here agree with you and we need to go back to a reconvene a budget, uh, committee. But I feel like there was a motion on the floor.
Andrew, are you listening?
You got this.
I am listening.
I make a re- uh. I just make a motion for resolution eight four zero. A resolution by the city council of Yamhill, Oregon, adopting the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year budget. Appropriating monies for operation and levying a property tax.
A second.
Can we get a vote?
Brothers and I.
Oregon I.
Ken I.
Aaron I.
And we pass unanimously. Um, and I do encourage you to bring, to get those together and we can look at policy. You know, again, just because it's approved doesn't mean that we can't make changes in supplemental budget. There's in, any number of ways that we can save money throughout the year. And I think that we should wherever we can.
And as you're doing your research, if you want to send all of us, we can't respond back and forth, but you can send all of us any of those contracts that you get. Of similar sized cities that we all kind of are on the same page as you with the info that you.
We'll make sure that there's not opinion, but that there's information.
Cause you can share information with us, right?
Okay.
So as you put that together.
So as you're, as you're finding out.
The city recorder.
Yeah.
Uh, you could send that to council as well, as long as it is just a statement of this is the research that I've done, but please do not put.
Yes.
Anything that would drag us down O Gex path into, uh, through communication. All right, thank you. Uh, so now we have, uh, resolution eight four one, a resolution for state revenue sharing. Do we need council discussion on state revenue sharing?
It is included in the budget.
It is. So I have seen no discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I don't have the fancy words in front of me. Uh, make a motion that we pass resolution eight four one, the resolution for state revenue sharing.
I second the motion.
Can we have a vote?
Brothers and I.
Ask you.
Oregon I.
Ken I.
Aaron I.
Fantastic. Moving on, review economic development committee membership guidelines and resolution eight twenty seven. So this is a request for council action from economic development. Have you all had a chance to review that?
Yes, I have a question. City staff liaison. Is that Walt?
For the econo- Angie, for the economic development? Is, I believe that's you, isn't it?
Apparently, yes, it could be any city staff member. It makes it a more generic term, so it's not a specified person.
Okay, and then the contract planner is Walt?
Currently Walt is our contracted planner.
Okay. So my question on this is. Because of our budget restraints. If he's on. This committee. Isn't that going to? Increase his bill drastically for him to be, because he's at the planning meetings. He's gonna be on the economic development committee.
Is that this?
Uh, cur- currently he is, uh, listed as, um, a member. And this is changing it, so it's only if we need his advisement. So we're changing it, so we do not have to have him.
So and do I, so you would, you would literally invite him if there was a planning issue for the economic development committee?
Correct.
Understood. And then it also allows for the broader group of applicants for the potential to apply. Removing reference to the city administrator to staff liaison instead. And to add a council representative to the committee.
And that was my, that was my only question.
Will we have more discussion? If no more discussion, can we get a motion?
Do you want me to say that we're gonna pass the resolution number R eight twenty seven? For the economic development committee?
Yes.
Is that it?
I think that's fine. Can we get a second?
Second.
Will we get a vote?
Ken I.
Nice. Oregon I.
Brothers and I.
Aaron I.
Fantastic.
What are you doing?
It's unanimous, so we've changed directions of the vote. All right, we, so now we're gonna continue the discussion regarding planning commission vacancies. Um, I do not believe we have had any applicants in the last month and we were all tasked to chase down applicants.
It is on the website. Somebody did do that.
It is on the website. I have asked several people. A lot of people have said they just don't have the time for it. Um, I did speak today to the planning chair. And Sean unfortunately has suffered an injury and was unable to attend the meeting tonight. So although we wouldn't make a decision tonight, this is just a discussion for it. But I would like to reiterate the fact that there was a human that lives outside of this city. By three miles that would like to apply for this position. Uh, when I had discussion with Sean today, he shared something that council had. That that would leave two people in the city limits and two people outside of the city limits on the planning commission. The, so Sean was of the opinion, and I'm speaking for him, I hope that's all right, that, uh. Although planning mission would have some concerns with that, just because. They're, you know, they don't. Live inside of the city limits. But as we were, we discussed the idea of potentially limiting, it's a two-year term on planning. And to potentially limit outside people to a one-year term, which would create, um, an automatic. Review and renewal of their position. Uh, as opposed to waiting for two years. Our mechanisms in place for both planning and council to remove. A sitting member of any committee. So if there was somebody doing something. That they shouldn't be doing or not in the best interest of the city, that could be looked at. Uh, does anybody wanna discuss or have comments on that?
Are you meaning to make it the outside city limit person one year always, or just. Allow this person so that we have somebody in that vacancy and just have them in there for one year?
So what it would do, honestly, so if we were to do that, that is literally just what just came up in a discussion today, is it would put. We would have to change. The way that the openings on the planning commission would be set up. So it currently says. Through, I think it was a resolution that, um, one person could live outside of the city limits, but had to be within, I think, three miles of the same zip code. So this would actually just now change that to say two people, but then we would shorten the terms. Of both of those people. So it would be Ken Moore, who currently sits on that, as well as any other person that lived outside of the city. But not to be, not to exceed ever two. And hopefully we still get this person inside of the city limits that would like to take part. And that would break, cause five are a lot. Potentially on there, so it would be a three, two. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Uh, I apologize. I should have offered a exit for you earlier. Have a good night. We would leave a three, two. Inside to outside.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
Not a bad idea. There's a clear lack of interest.
There's a very much a lack of interest inside of the city and that's too bad. Um, I would really love to see that filled. I, I am a planning nerd and I really loved being on there.
I, I actually reached out to Todd Olivera. And he was gonna think about it, but then he came back and said, what days are the planning meetings on? And I, Tuesdays, I think is what I told him. Well, whatever day, cause I looked on my calendar. And because he works out of town a lot. He said, yeah, that's not.
Wasn't gonna work for him. And that's kind of what I hear from everybody. Again, Grant Warren was the person that applied. He does live outside of town. He has a business that is three miles outside of town. Uh, he's raised his kids here, uh, seems to have a lot of passion for it. I, my thinking on this is that, uh. I think that maybe we could. Go where we were speaking is maybe limit or ask planning if they would like to. To limit that or to leave it at two years. I don't know that it much matters, cause there are mechanisms to replace somebody that was not performing. Or maybe not serving the interest of the city. I think that's the reason, right, for. Having somebody that's, you know, a stakeholder in the city, although three miles out, you're still a stakeholder. This is where you would come to town.
Yeah. I don't, I don't agree with it.
You don't like it? Wouldn't we, uh. Let, uh, so and the other thing is Lynn Carl is I, from, I'm not speaking for Lynn. But I believe he was looking to retire and travel extensively. So we would then be down one more commission, which leaves us without a planning commission for.
Let me reach out to a couple of different people and see maybe if somebody would be interested and kind of.
I think that that's fine, because there are two openings. Uh, but what I'd like, what I'd like to see council do, and you know, we can direct staff or not. Uh, but I would like to, to ask staff to prepare for maybe next month's meeting. Um, and to go to, to maybe the planning commission first. Um, to approve those changes where it would be possible for somebody outside. Now that's also to say, right, so you. If we did say there was two that were outside and we had three people from inside the city that applied, that does not mean it's not first come, first served. It's what's best for the city that we choose from. And then that would give, uh, first planning would make a recommendation to council. And then council would approve or not approve their recommendations. But so my thought, I mean, let's ask staff to get it ready for a planning commission to see if we can. It shorten the term for outside and increase it to two people.
Do we know why the people that were on planning left? What the reasoning behind it was, just. Not happy or you, it's not interested anymore? Does anybody know?
So I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I could speculate, but I don't know if that would be fair for the people that left planning. You know, um. But the reality is, I mean, I don't think council or staff, uh, office staff has heard any complaints. About, you know, it's not being run correctly or it's dissatisfying.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just asking.
But I do think it's important to have more than three count, or, you know, planning commissions. So with that, we think it's, we could direct staff. Okay, and then again, that would, that would still come for vote and then that would still go to vote with the planning commission first. All right, all that said, I'm sure everybody keeps track of their hours as well as I do. Please do better than I do.
I just tried, but I'm not logged in on this computer.
We'll get you. Um, city county dinner, um, if anybody's going, I will not be able to attend that, so with. Would somebody like to give a speech for the sitting? Uh, I will, I will be actually, I believe on the eighteenth, I have to double check my count, but, uh, my daughter has been invited to the Nike. Nationals for long jump in. So at fourteen, she would be competing in that and that's pretty cool. I'm gonna make sure I'm there for that. We'll get something figured out for a speech. Then June nineteenth is Juneteenth and city offices will be closed. Also, Independence Day is July fourth, city offices will be closed. And there's eleven federal holidays.
When do we need to give our dinner?
It was last year.
It was last year, so I, I. I think it's every other. Is that right?
Last year was the first one that I've ever.
I think it's every five years.
Yeah.
Was it every five years?
Yeah, cause there's a lot of towns.
Yeah, well, that's perfect. I think it was five years to get something built to put in. Well, you got, everybody, thank you for. Tonight, it was, I know, quirky and strange. Thank you so much for helping us out. Angie, it's amazing having you spend your time with us tonight to help us. And sorry about that script. I know that you know what I'm talking about. And, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
A second.
We are adjourned.